Hatch LTK, now Hatch Consultants, Inc., includes a couple of members, Mr. Winston Simmons and Jessica Ikabuchi, who were with us out in the, in the, us being Tammy Fullbright and myself, in the negotiations with Simmons when working through these very, very complex projects. Essentially, this is a $400 million acquisition of 55 light rail vehicles. So it is a big deal. And having, for instance, Mr. Simmons' expertise along with Ms. Ikabuchi's was really instrumental when we came to some of the financial negotiations as well as the engineering. So the nice thing about the Hatch team is that they have the full gamut of both the engineering oversight, but also some of the assistance that was very important as Tammy and I were negotiating with the Simmons team on the schedule of payments. Obviously, with a multi-year procurement of this nature, being sure that the schedule of payments along with the Federal Transit Administration's, they're part of the contribution, which I'll remind everyone is $196 million. Really great federal grant. This team's been very, very good. And I just want to add my endorsement to the Hatch team. They've been very, very helpful. And they're also embedded with the Simmons engineers, essentially being sure that the production is compliant along with our own staff. So through this period of time, essentially, they're acting as an extension of our staff that we don't have to hire permanently. That's just for this specific project. So I really do appreciate board's consideration of this. I found it to be a very good professional relationship. And Hatch has, has really come through and we needed them.
Thank you, President Rose. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners concerning?
I, I have one, Madam Chair. Was this type of increase anticipated to be in this high, Mr. Roche?
Well, only because of the, so the original contract had the 24-vehicle schedule. So now we've essentially doubled that. It would be 55. So a lot of the hours contained in the proposal has to do with the onsite inspections of those additional vehicles. And, and that is part of it during the manufacturing process. The Hatch team will actually be on the, on the floor, being sure that the delivery of these vehicles is consistent with the contract. And so very, so the, most of the increase is due to, well, quite frankly, we've more than doubled the order, which is obviously great news. But the increase is in line with that. It's pretty well detailed, but that's really the, the reason for it.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Any other questions or comments from?
Hey, Dan, can you move the?
I have a question, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Dr. Eisen, yes.
Yeah. Was the original contract for this sole source?
We did put it out to bid. You know, I don't remember, Dan, Chris, do you remember on, on this, Mr. Paylor?
No, sorry, I don't recall the specifics.
Yeah. So, Dan, I don't remember right off the, right off hand. This is obviously very specialized to you, so I need to check into that.
Okay.
So, Mr. Rose, could you get that information back to Dr. Eisen promptly?
Sure can.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item as presented by Mr. Curran.
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Beach. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Jennings. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed or extensions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Moving on. Mr. Curran, you seem to be the star of the show today as you discuss the sole source contract award for professional engineering services, structural engineering and design support services. Gail Zidler, hopefully I pronounced your name correctly. And Mr. Curran and Mr. Poller will present this item.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this is a sole source contract for professional engineering services related to the evaluation of the Big Bend Tunnel and MetroLink Station. The Cross County MetroLink Extension opened in 2006, and it includes three separate tunnels. Tunnels number two and number three, and two underground stations at Skinker and Big Bend began to show signs of water infiltration soon after the start of service. Bi-State pursued litigation regarding the water infiltration issue, and Gall-Zidler Consultants was hired to provide engineering services to the Bi-State legal team at that time. Gall-Zidler is an engineering firm specializing in tunnel engineering services. And through their work with Bi-State, they gained a unique understanding of Bi-State's tunnels and stations. In June 2021, Bi-State entered into a sole source contract with Gall-Zidler for reassessment of the condition of the tunnels and stations, plus the preparation of construction plans for rehabilitating these areas. From the design process, it has been determined that structural modeling services are needed to assess, verify the load rating capacity of the Big Bend Tunnel, and to ensure compliance with MoDOT requirements. Bi-State has negotiated a proposed scope of work and fee with Gall-Zidler Consultants to provide the necessary services for the proposed project. Management is recommending that the Operations Committee accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners this request that the President and CEO be authorized to enter into a sole source contract with Gall-Zidler Consultants for engineering for the Big Bend Tunnel in an amount not to exceed $124,547.17. And Chris Paylor is here to answer any technical questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? For Mr. Paylor or Mr. Curran concerning this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item as presented.
I so move.
Thank you, Commissioner Galladay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Great, hearing none, the motion passes. We'll move to item 10. Contract modification, Design Services, 79th Street Retaining Wall Rehabilitation, Majeski and Masters. Again, Mr. Curran and Mr. Paylor will be presenting this item.
Thank you. Management is making this request for authorization to modify our existing contract with Majeski and Masters for the 79th Street retaining wall design project. In August 2023, Bi-State entered into a contract with Majeski and Masters to provide design services for repair of the retaining walls at the 79th Street Crossing in East St. Louis. That contract was for $612,351, plus a contingency of 10% with a 35-week performance period. Since the initial contract execution, 290-day contract time extensions have been issued that extend the contract through October 10th of this year. A modification in addition to the original scope of work is being requested. Additional design services are required to expedite the design and solicitation of the project. Bi-State also adds design services during construction to the scope of work. And the cost for all of these additional services is $683,250.37. The project team feels the scope modification will adequately address the needs of the project. And they believe the increased fee and time extension are fair and reasonable. I want to point out, if you're not familiar with it, the 79th Street retaining wall supports an above-grade section of MetroLink in East St. Louis, where 79th Street passes under the light rail tracks and intersects with St. Clair Avenue. So management is recommending that the Operations Committee accept and forward to Board of Commissioners for approval this recommendation to modify Bi-State's existing contract with Majeski and Masters for the increased scope elements at a cost of $683,250.37, which includes a 10% contingency and DVE participation in excess of the 10.5% goal. And again, Chris Paylor is available to answer any technical questions regarding this proposal.
Are there any questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I have a question. What, what seems to be the holdup on this project? And if we've had 290 days extension, what seems to be the technical problem there?
The largest part of the challenge with Mr. Simmons with this project is trying to figure out the best way to construct this wall without disrupting service. And the challenge specifically on this project is real estate and right-of-way availability as well as Illinois American Water Lines and their locations. They were not in the location underground where they were shown on the plan. So we've had to work very closely with Illinois American to relocate a couple of their lines, and that's been the primary cause of the delay. So we have to get their lines out of the way before we can start our work. They won't allow their lines to be underneath the new wall. So we relocated one of their lines. And the other line is, we're working on relocating that now. But we have put the initial package out to bid, which is the actual block walls. And we've received bids for that already. And we're just getting ready to finalize the next contract to put it on the street. And then these services will be, again, during construction.
So this extra expense, what is it going to consist of? If everything has been basically designed and we know we got to relocate, what is this extra cost being applied to?
Most of these costs are for engineering services during construction. So we're going to be working a lot of hours, overnight hours and such. So we'll use our staff to inspect the work whenever we can, however, when we're working long hours and overnight hours. And especially with a challenging projects like this, we need help in verifying those inspections. Because this is right, right adjacent to the tracks, and we want to have someone out there all the time. In addition, we want some specialty geotechnical knowledge, because again, it's right up against the wall. And so consultants offer that specialized knowledge. So we'll be tapping them quite a bit. And we'll also ask them to go to shops and inspect the shops and inspect the, the concrete units as they're being fabricated as well. So again, this are just, it's a reversal of expenses. We'll try and use our staff whenever we can, whenever it makes sense. And this is not a lump sum, so we'll only pay them if we, if we need the hours or if we actually use them. But we wanted to put these hours in there just so they are available to us, so it doesn't have any delays or any, we encounter any issues during construction.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions?
Yes.
Someone say yes?
Oh, yes.
Right. Hearing no additional questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item as presented.
No move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item 11.
Madam Chair, if I can interrupt just for a minute?
Sure.
Thank you. So just two quick notifications. We are live on, and we're about 15 minutes ago. So I want everybody to know that we are now accomplishing live on Facebook. Additionally, I have confirmed Commissioner Eisen's question. There were two bidders on the original Hatch LTK project. So it was competitively bid, and we did have a good response on the original. So just to clarify those issues, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, President Rose. Item 11, IDOT agreement for Taxiway Bravo Construction Phase 3. Mary Lammy will be presenting this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are requesting approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the third phase of construction of the Taxiway Bravo Reconstruction Project at the St. Louis Downtown Airport. In 2009, FAA identified the reconstruction of the Taxiway as a required project to meet and maintain federal safety standards. The first construction phase is completed. The second construction phase is in the award process with IDOT. The scope of this third construction phase includes the construction of taxiway pavement, lights and signage. If you refer to that attached map, it's the green highlighted section. The project was included on the State of Illinois' June 14, 2024, letting. IDOT received three bids. IDOT intends to accept the low bid and enter into a contract with Baxmeyer Construction. That low bid was $5,245,777. The engineering fee to oversee the construction is $343,476. The total amount is $5,589,253. The total project cost will be funded 90% by the FAA, 5% by IDOT, 5% by Bi-State Development's Airport Fund. So our portion is $279,462. So we are requesting approval to enter into that intergovernmental agreement with IDOT. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Those numbers sound good.
On those, on those numbers, how much is our cost, Mary?
So our, our cost, the 5% is $279,462.
Fine, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve this item as presented.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Beach. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the item as presented? Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed or any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item 12, Mr. Rose. Is there any unscheduled business?
No unscheduled business today.
Great. Moving on to Mr. Stewart. Our operations report.
Thank you, Chairperson Moore, and welcome. Good morning, Commissioners. I have an operations report for you today. Our operations update and our workforce updates for June are in your packet. I'd like to highlight a few other things for you. We continue to have our hiring events, very, very successful hiring events. As you know, our focus now is on Colorado operators and mechanics. And we are doing well in both areas. And I'll report some numbers on, on, on that as we move forward. We continue to provide the $5,000 sign-on bonus for Colorado operators, mechanics and electricians. Even though we are no longer providing that bonus for bus operators, we're still getting a significant number of applications for bus operator positions. We have a service change that is scheduled for September 9th. As I've been reporting, our service changes over the last year have been focused mainly on frequency and reliability. We're back to the point where we have like 12-minute service on our major routes like Grand and Kings Highway. We are now adding, adding additional trips to our early morning routes. We're still within the service area that we've been working in for the last year or so. But again, we are improving our service in the area that we are servicing. I currently have three, over 630 bus operators. I have a budget for 650. I've got 31 scheduled for training right now. So we're going to meet that objective very soon. I have 160 van operators, a budget of 180. We were shooting for 150 in August, and we made it. We're shooting for 170 in November, and we're going to make it way before then. I've got about 20 or 30 van operators that are scheduled for training right now. So I want to give you a little more detailed Colorado update. I think a very, very telling stat. Our key, our key metrics for Colorado are, again, the number of operators that we have, the number of trips that we are providing, and the number of denials that, that we are forced to make because of capacity constraints. Over the last 14 months, basically since April of 2023, my operator team has grown from 110 to about 160 at this point. The number of rides we are providing have grown from 5,000 a week to close to 7,000 a week at this point. We're showing significant improvement in providing rides to our customers. The denial percentage has gone down from 46% about 14 months ago to right around 1% right now. So we are, our new Colorado team, our new policies, our new procedures, our efforts to improve our Colorado operations is working. It is working significantly. And I think we're getting recognition for that from our ADA community at this point. We had issues with phone systems, as I reported previously. We updated our phone system, we changed the provider. We haven't had no dropped calls since July 13th. None. Now, does that mean everything is perfect? It does not. We're still working on wait times and that type of thing. But we continue to improve that as well. We have selected a new software vendor for our registration and dispatching software. We are in the process now of starting the implementation of this new process. We will be engaging our ADA customers in that process in helping to test the software as we move forward. We have, we have re-engaged our ADA consultant, who will be on with us for the next 12 to 14 weeks, I think it is, again, helping us to improve our service and our operations. We're looking forward to that. We continue to do our Community Connect communication to our, our ADA community as well as our, our ridership at large throughout the region. We had a Community Connect session during August, and they will be scheduled again. We do those on a quarterly basis. So we will continue to make sure that our customers, that our riders, especially our ADA riders, are fully aware of what we are doing to continually improve the service that we are providing. Are there any questions at this point concerning workforce or, or operations? I'd also like to give you a brief update on our relationship with the St. Louis Public Schools. Any questions at this point?
Chuck, this is?
Go ahead. I'm not sure who's speaking. Would that use some?
Chuck, Chuck, that was, hi, this is Winston Calvert, sorry. I was just, I, I wanted to say, number one, you and Talby and the whole team are to be commended for the work that's been done on Colorado. I think that's remarkable. And the, the proof is in the pudding, as they say. And the, that 1% number is pretty remarkable. I wonder what the, if we have any comparison data or comparative data to other systems in other cities with that, the same or similar programs as the Colorado. And if they've faced similar challenges, I would presume many would, given the workforce issues around the country.
I think many systems have had the same problems. Not only from, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, I, no, I was done.
Okay. So, yeah, I think other systems are having the same problem. And as we try, as we move forward in implementing the processes that we are hoping will correct our situations. We are communicating with other systems. We did that considerably in the process of selecting a new software vendor, seeing what other people were doing, getting feedback on what works. And, you know, but no, no two paratransit systems are, are the same. Ours is a little, is a little unique in how we operate it. I don't know if I have statistics on those things, but my team may very well have them. And I will make sure that if we do that, I will share that information.
Yeah, if I can speak just very briefly on that, it's a great point. So there is good data on, from National Transit data. I actually provided that, some of that for St. Louis County County Council, where they were asking for a comparison on the regular transit side, which we provided last Tuesday. And the St. Louis system compares very favorably. So we could, we could pull some of the same data points on paratransit and just kind of give a good comparison of, of somewhat comparable cities. For example, say Pittsburgh's and Indianapolis, some of the others. Similar kind of typically Tier 2 Midwestern cities tend to compare well. And, and thank you very much for the compliment, Commissioner. One thing I wanted to add that I was going to put in my comments, but one thing that Chuck and his team have, have earned is we actually got an endorsement letter from our friends at Smart endorsing our FY 25 budget for St. Louis County. And, you know, that was a really big move. And so leaning into the paratransit community and making them real partners has, has really been something that Chuck and his team have done a really, really good job at. It doesn't, doesn't mean that they're not as, as good advocates, that they're not critical of some issues. We still have improvement to make, and I want to acknowledge that. And if any of them on the, on the line, as they often are, I want to say that, A, we're very grateful for that, but we do not feel that we are done. We still have an arc of improvement. We are all, we want to reach the same objectives, which is improvement of service. And I just want to take this opportunity to really commend Chuck and his leadership in making a really 180-degree change at Colorado, changing all of the leadership, moving very fast on these numbers. And despite what we have seen as a national strain on employment, and now through those efforts, it's getting better. Still have work to do, and we're committed to that. But we're excited about where we are headed. Thank you.
Thank you, President Rose. Anyone else? Mr. Simmons, did you have something?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Stewart, you mentioned something about you're still working on the delay issues. Can you elaborate on that? I mean, is there, is that, have we seen a drastic improvement in that? Or do we still have a long way to go in that?
Well, that's something that is, one of the things, you know, we, we talked a few months ago about going to one-day reservations and, you know, how to kind of spread out the, the demand. And as, as our customers learn to trust that we are moving in the right direction, what, what is still happening is that people are calling primarily on Friday morning between 7:00, 7:30, or whatever that half hour is. And that's where we get inundated with calls. And that's where the, the, the time, that's where we get the delays in, in answering the phone. As, as our customers realize that we are providing a more dependable service going forward, then they will trust what we're, what we're doing now is, is, is three-day reservations. They will trust that they can call, they can call Wednesday, and they can call Tuesday and get a reservation so that we're not inundated on, on certain dates. So Fridays are still a big time for us. And as things get better and the trust gets better, I think we'll be able to mitigate that as well.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. And one item I'd like to add, or one statement, really not an item. It, it appears based on what you presented that your retention rate is good. You're doing well keeping those recent hires.
Well, we've done, we've, we've worked on that. I mean, one of the things that helped us with that was the new contract with our Colorado operators and other benefits that the Board has approved over the last couple of years to, to incentivize people to stay with us. Our retirement plans, all of those things are helping. Our revisions to our training, our mentorship programs, these are the things that are helping us to be more sticky once we, we get people in the door. So those things are working for us as well.
That's great, great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any other comments, questions, or advice? Moving on, President Rose.
No, I'm not done.
Oh, you're not done? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not done. I'm not done. In, in, in the midst of all those accolades, I kind of lost my place. But what, you know, what, uh, one of the questions was about checking with other, with other, uh, properties. And what, what the board doesn't realize is during these meetings, we're getting texts from our team members saying, say this, say that, say this, say that. So, um, so my Colorado team is saying, hey, they've checked with everybody. And the major problem that most properties they have is with, uh, with employment, with people, okay? And I think we have done some very unique things to help us get over that issue as, as we were just talking about. So, um, if no more questions in that area, I'd like to move forward with, uh, St. Louis Public Schools. School starts Monday. And we have been working diligently, uh, with the St. Louis Public Schools, with their transportation people and their security people. And we are in the midst of working on an agreement, uh, for our services as we, uh, move into the school year. Uh, the basic service that we're going to be providing, um, we're going to be transporting high school students. Okay? They've got nineteen providers taking care of everybody else. We will be providing service for our high school students. Most of the high schools are located along the Grand or King's Highway corridors. So that's where the concentration of students will take place as they come from other places, uh, in the city. Uh, so we are preparing for that additional load on our regular service. They will, we will be using our regular service where we are prepared at any time to supplement that service in the case of any overcrowding in any specific area. So basically, our, uh, transit service managers, our, uh, service area managers will be on hand, uh, monitoring the situation real time. And any situation that requires us to add additional service, uh, we will add service immediately, okay? Uh, again, they, they will, the students will be co-mingled with our normal customers. We do not want to impact our normal riders, our people that are going, going to work, that are going to doctor's appointments, whatever they are doing at these hours. So we want to make sure that we are lim- uh, nimble, that we can basically provide the service as an as, as needed basis. We may stage buses in certain areas to make sure that our system, the integrity of our system is maintained throughout this process. Our security people have talked to their security people. They have planned. We will do our normal, um, route, riding of the route, monitoring the situation. We will communicate with the St. Louis Public School, um, um, security people continuously if we need their help, their assistance. We've encouraged them to ride our buses. I'm not sure if they are authorized to do that. We're encouraging them to, to focus on the spots where students may converge, large numbers of students at any given time. We've done this before. We did this two years ago. Uh, we did it at a time where we were less, we had fewer resources than we have now to, to really put to this. But our drivers committed to doing this because these are our kids. These are our kids. This is our community. So we have, um, we have skin in the game, okay? And we are trying to provide the best service possible, uh, as we assist the St. Louis Public Schools, uh, through this situation. We have provided them with tools. We did a video, how, basically how to ride a bus, okay? How to, how to call in, get a route map, you know, all the things that you need in order to ride the bus. We've given them our information team numbers, our customer service. We've offered them, we've offered parents the opportunity to ride along with their student. We will give them a free, uh, day pass, uh, to check out the route. We were asking them to do that last week before school starts, get out there, see what your student will be experiencing. The more we know, the more everybody knows, the better off the whole situation is going to be. I think, I don't know if I said, I attended the, the, uh, school board meeting last week or maybe it was this week. Things are so, so busy. But, um, and their team made a presentation, their transportation team and their security team. And they basically assured the board, uh, and the, and the audience present that, uh, we were working out a, an agreement and that we were prepared for Monday. So we are prepared for Monday. So any questions you might have on that situation, I'd be happy to answer as well.
I just want to commend you, Mr. Rose, the entire staff from top to bottom for stepping up to address this serious issue and help the kids uh, in the face of the failure from the city school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Beach. Any other comments or questions? Okay. I don't want to cut Mr. Stewart off.
Look, I'm done. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to, uh, President Rose, do you have a report?
I do. Thank you. Uh, good morning again. So, uh, obviously, uh, Commissioner Moore, great job. You're doing great. Um, and soon we'll have, uh, Commissioner AJ running Audit and Finance. So I just want to thank, uh, the board for your leadership. Uh, like, it's really important that we have this high-functioning board and that we are advised. It's very easy for us to lose perspective and that perspective you lend on how the public is seeing our service is absolutely vital. Um, please, uh, know that staff and myself really appreciate your low, your role and guidance in, in helping this agency along. We are at your disposal and thank you for that perspective. Um, so also I want to note that we had a very good meeting at, uh, St. Louis County and that legislation is advancing. Um, that final approval is imminent. Uh, we went through some specific exchanges of information associated with Colorado and I mentioned the endorsement letter from our friends at SMART. Really great move. Um, I, I will tell you, those Tuesday nights are often hard meetings and that was probably one of the best Tuesdays that I've had. Really, really well, uh, received meeting. Uh, but also one announcement that I have is kind of one of those tough ones. So, and that is that Charles Stewart has announced his intention to retire in July of twenty twenty-five. Please, Commissioners, no one, no one in this building or watching online will be sadder to see Chuck leave than me. It is tough to come in and we do hard business, but let me tell you that, uh, Chuck's coaching has meant not only success for the agency, but success for me personally with his guidance and being at my side. I will miss him horribly. I'll miss him horribly just because he's a nice guy, right? And there's something to say about that. Um, so I really do want to tell you that, um, Chuck has been nice enough to give us some advance notice. So obviously, one of the reasons why I want to know, note this to the Board of Commissioners is that in your perspective, obviously, we're going to be looking to, uh, have someone move into that position. There, of course, is no replacing Chuck Stewart. But we do need to move on and now is the time that we honor, uh, a leader with his integrity and consistency. Um, and I'm looking forward to doing that. Uh, the one thing I want to leave you with is we had a meeting in the E- EVPs and there was one word that, um, somebody mentioned about Chuck Stewart and I think it really describes him to a T, and that is steadfast. Chuck is always there. He's always there for his work colleagues and for this community. This is a storied career in public service and I think he, he should be recognized for it. And I am really grateful for his, uh, friendship, friendship and as a work colleague. Chuck, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to be sad to see you go, but, uh, I'm very, very grateful and, and happy for your success. So, uh, that concludes my remark, Chair.
Wow. You should have kept that one, actually. Uh, the only question is, in our role as Commissioners, what is the strength of this body to overrule Mr. Stewart's decision caused him to remain? Maybe we should have a private conversation with Mr. Stewart and, and work through this, but gee, that, that, that hits pretty hard, President, and, uh, Mr. Stewart. But congratulations to you, but we will reject your desire no matter what.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, wasn't ready for that. For item fifteen, moving on. Mrs. Bennett will, will move to you to announce the dates of upcoming board and committee meetings.
Yes, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, September twentieth at eight-thirty. The next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, October third. And the next Operations Committee, as well as the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee meetings will be held on Friday, October eighteenth. All of the meetings starting at eight-thirty AM.
Very much. For item sixteen, we will adjourn to executive session. I will entertain a motion that the committee go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential or privileged matters as permitted under Bi-State Development Board Policy, Chapter Ten, Section one, zero point zero eight zero, D one legal and D seven purchasing and contracts. Is there a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Bennett, will you pull the committee, please?
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvert?
Yes.
And Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Wait, we'll move into executive session and you will let us know when we will proceed.